In recess, and now we'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, there's several administrative items that the commission needs to take care of today, so. Uh, since you're here, you get to sit through those, it's not real complicated, but. Uh, first is the establish- establishment of a meeting location, the dates of our meetings, and the time of our meetings. And, uh, somewhere I have some notes on those. So we kinda stay on track, I think. I think, uh, we had talked about going back to two regular meetings a month. Uh, rather than have often, often having to call special call meetings. And so I would like to propose that we do that and that we hold those meetings on at this off- at this location on the second and fourth Tuesday. At nine o'clock on those dates. And, uh, but just as an aside to that, during the month of November, we're having this meeting so late, we have the holidays. This will be the only November meeting unless we have a special call meeting. December, the same thing, we'll have the first meeting of the month and then pass on the second meeting, but beginning January, let's plan to go to two meetings a month. If there's a holiday that conflicts with one of them, we'll just plan to meet the next working day following the holiday. So the second and fourth Tuesdays each month, nine o'clock, this location is my recommendation, uh, entertain a motion on that if you have one.
I make a motion, we, uh, have our meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month at nine AM.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions?
Would that be for the four, four years term, the November, December meeting, or would that be on a yearly?
Well, we'll take it on a year by year basis, uh, for right now, we'll, uh, we will announce if we're gonna forego a meeting, so now we're gonna announce this year, we'll just do that on a case by case basis. Any other questions?
Uh. I think you and I, and, and I think some of the others that talked about, we'd love to be able to have maybe one meeting, a quarter, one meeting something at, at another location, maybe at night, like in Florale or Redlow or O.P. Those areas, is that, is that something we can talk about?
I'd like to do that.
I think, I think the communities would appreciate it, and I think you said you'd had quite a bit of conversation about that, and I, I think that would be well. I, my preference would be that we not make it, uh, you know, not, not so definite on that, but make that as, as part of this motion, that our intent is to, to hold maybe four meetings a year at, at remote locations. Uh, evenings, uh, we've done that on occasion, it never seemed to work well in the evenings for us in the past, but I think that's just.
And it may be something that we can do, do as a trial and error thing, and if it works, you know, and, and, but I think the people outside the county, the people in O.P., the people in Florale, who are traveling to this distance every time. I think if we offer them that opportunity there.
They'll, they'll appreciate it.
They'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. You, you certainly can make it part of the, part of the formal, uh, motion if you want to, but if you wanna just make that as a notation in the minutes that that was discussed, then I think that'll be effective, your call. Kyle, what do, what do you think?
I'm in agreeance with, uh, Mr. Holmes on that, I'd like to move the meetings around, maybe the first one every four mon- every three months.
Okay, alright. Any other comments, questions, so the, so the motion is, uh, second and fourth Tuesdays, nine o'clock, this location. With the acknowledgement that we will make every effort to maybe have quarterly meetings outside of this, at a remote location. You know, in the, in the past, we did a roll call vote, I think y'all been doing voice vote, and, and we'll, we may change this after this meeting, but for now, let's just do it by voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, so we've set the location. Next item on the agenda is designation of Chairman Pro Tim to conduct meetings in the absence of the Chairman and. Uh, handle some other duties, I think signature authority on the bank, is that right, is part of that as well, so, one of the wishes from the commission.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Joe Barton for that, I think Joe's been here, uh, three, four years as well as Kenneth. Uh, I understand Kenneth doesn't have a real interest in, in that, but, uh, Joe might be one of those, and I just think the experience would be help.
Okay, so there's a motion to, uh, elect Joe Barton. Anybody else have thoughts on that?
Well, if we want, I mean, I'm fine with it, uh, if Kenneth wants to share in it, we can do it on a yearly or two years, split it up. Give either way, I'm, I'm open to either way, if, if, you know, except be all, if y'all wanna.
Okay.
Do two and two, or either let him do four, or, either way, I'm, I'm open to either way, I'm, anyway, I can do a part of it, it don't matter to me.
So the motion is that, uh, Joe be the, uh, Pro Tim, you wanna change that to address this idea of rotating it?
I would, I, I'd, I'd, I think that the idea of rotating would be a, would be a great idea. Uh, and, uh, let me change it to say Joe for the first year.
Okay, and then just with the idea of, of considering it again at the end of that first year, alright, that's a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
There's a second, any other comments on it, thoughts? Lynn, what do you think, no, I'm just joking, I don't get you in the spot, just checking, see if you're listening, alright. So the motion is, uh, Joe Barton for year one, and then consider, uh, electing that, uh, that person for year two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so Mr. Barton's Chairman Pro Tim. If you, Commissioners, if you look at page four, page four through nineteen, I know you've had these for a while, so I hope, I hope you've had a chance to look at them already. There are proposed rules of order, uh, in the, in most organizations, you know, Robert's Rules of Order are followed. There is a thought under the, when you consider the Alabama Open Meetings Law, and some of the dictates from it, and the peculiar nature of county commission governance under the laws of Alabama. That, that you probably should consider rules of order that are more specific to county, county business. And so, our association, Alabama Association of County Commissions has submitted for consideration many years ago, when the, when the current open meetings law was adopted by the legislature, passed by the legislature. They proposed that we have, uh, a particular set of rules, rules of order that address some of the particular needs, and so that's what we're considering. It's not Robert's Rules of Order, it follows many of the things from Robert's Rule of Order, and if there's a conflict or, or something that's not addressed, then I think you fall back to Robert's Rules of Order to pick up. Uh, so anyway, those, you've had those, I'd be glad to enter, uh, hear your comments, thoughts on those, entertain a motion to adopt these or something different.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt these rules of order.
Okay.
Uh, I was just gonna make a, go ahead, but a second.
Well, let's get, yeah, let's get a second, and then we can.
I, I second.
Alright.
But, the Robert Rules of Order is pretty complex, and we found that out, there's so many things, it contradicts itself, and that's why these rules is so much better than what that is to us, you know, what I've seen.
Yeah. So you, you didn't have any questions, again, I mean, on these particularly?
No, I think, you know, pretty much is what we've been doing.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, alright, so we've adopted the rules of order. Uh, you, in your, in your packet, nope, not in your packet, you received emailed copies of, uh, October twelve meeting minutes. And also, that was a regular meeting, and then on November fourth, there was a special call meeting, and I think you've had a chance to review those minutes. We entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, or make corrections and approve them.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for October twelve, sixteenth, and November four, special meeting.
Okay.
I second.
Motion and a second, anybody else find anything that needs to be corrected? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, those minutes are adopted. Page twenty through twenty-seven are your listing of, uh, payroll and accounts payable for October two thousand sixteen. I would ask that you review those, if you've not yet done so, take a moment too, and then we'll entertain a motion to accept those or approve them.
I make a motion, we approve the accounts payable for October.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll say.
Nobody else found an error, corrections that we need to make, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is it that included, are we doing them two sets, 'cause he just mentioned accounts payable, he did not mention the payroll, do we need two motions, or are we gonna end that?
Well, I think the intent was on both of them, it, was that the intention was for.
Payroll and again, yeah, okay, okay.
The whole, the whole list, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, um. Let, let me skip the administrative item on line eight right now, if that's okay, just for a second, just till I find my notes, so.
Okay.
Let's move on to, uh.
Can we vote on it?
Let's, uh, come back to the franchise agreement, uh, on item I, page twenty-eight through thirty-seven, I'd like to call on, uh, the attorneys, Stephanie Cotton, to, uh, address this issue for us, tell us a little bit about what we're being asked to do.
Okay, the, the franchise agreement, uh, that Karen and I were presented with, we actually had requested surrounding counties to give us some examples, so that we knew what was basic boilerplate language. Um, after reviewing several of the examples and, uh, and what the law is currently on the franchise agreements, Karen and I have recommended two changes. One of them was, um, regarding the three percent annual gross revenues, we're requesting a brief report be prepared, so that we could know what the basis of that computation is annually. And then also, we'd ask for provision about cable service to public buildings, if we have one in the area, and subject to just the, is that the only two changes? Yes, okay, I'm, I, I think it looks good.
Okay. So we're being asked to, uh, enter this contract, approve this contract?
Yes.
A, a franchise agreement, and it's with who, with?
Troy Cable Vision.
Troy Cable Vision. And their service area for, is, uh, expected right now to be in the south end of the county, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, questions, uh, on this, but even before we entertain a motion, just make sure.
It's more or less just a, for them to run through our county to get somewhere else, basically, what I mean.
Yeah, that's what I understand, with some thought that they may have service area in the future, but this is, the initial step is to get them through here, to provide service elsewhere.
We did, but we looked at others because we had Andy Cable that possibly would want one too, and we didn't want this brought back up years later with, where you gave them this, this is what we want as well, so.
And, and I talked with, uh, Mike at Andy Cable, and he was comfortable with this, from his perspective, just so that there's not a conflict between servers, uh, and, uh, yeah, so he was favorable towards it.
And, and all the suggested changes that I've just mentioned would be uniform with what we would expect from anybody else, and this is a, a non-exclusive franchise agreement too, so there's no exclusivity there at all.
Alright, so is there a motion to, uh, enter this contract for a franchise agreement?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Alright, motion and a second, any, any other questions now? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So the motion carries, franchise agreement will be signed later today. Now back up to, uh, I, H, the administrative items, there were a couple of items, uh, that I had in my notes on, we were uncertain of how many things there may be to consider there, so I just left it kind of vague. But, uh, one is approving, uh, the depository for county funds, as we, as this administration comes in, tell us, uh, where those are now.
We're currently using Cadence Bank for, of the county, for our commission, uh, banking accounts, there are other offices throughout the county that use different banks, and so what we normally approve is the use of all of our local banks for the county use.
Okay, and, and there, there's opportunity, as we go along, to, uh, ex, uh, request bids for banking services, that's real cumbersome, you don't wanna do it on spur of the moment, you, that's something you kinda plan significantly for. So we can certainly do that in the future, but for now, just be able to write these payroll checks that everybody's looking for, we probably need, need to approve the, as she said, uh, use of all of, you know, local banks, area banks. Banks with, uh, with, uh, branches in Covington County, is that the way you've done that?
That's right.
Okay, we would entertain a motion to that effect.
I make a motion that we approve the depositories.
Okay. There's a second?
Second.
Comments on that, questions on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, it's approved. And then the other item under the administrative is, uh, to approve the signatures on these bank accounts as appropriate. Some are under the sheriff, the probate judge, or whatever, and we don't have anything to do with those specific funds, but the vast majority are county commission, uh, accounts, and so we need the approval for what signa- what, what names, what signatures?
It would be the administrator, the chairman, and then the, the Chairman Pro Tim.
Alright, so those are the three folks that you'd be approving, if you're inclined to do so, is there a motion to approve those?
I make a motion, will you? Approve those signatures.
I think we're probably adopting a banking resolution, uh, that is, so adoption of that resolution, there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second, questions, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That's all I had on the administrative items, does anybody else have anything that you have thought about that need to be addressed there, that didn't make the agenda otherwise? Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, item J, consider donation to the Andalusia Area Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I'm gonna call on Karen to help me remember what the request was for specifically.
The chamber had, uh, contacted us about, uh, helping with their Veterans Day program that they held last week, uh, last Friday.
Last Friday, mhm.
And they've requested five hundred dollars appropriation for that, and since we were not meeting during the time of our request, then it, it fell over to this time period for you to decide if that's what you wish to do.
It, uh, it is cons- it is referred to as Covington County Veterans Day Celebration, and we have participated in the past years, you know, many years ago, so I think it's appropriate with.
It's something we've always done, everywhere.
So would entertain a motion, or, uh, to, to, uh, participate if you'd like.
Uh, make that motion.
At the, at the request at five hundred dollar level, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, motion for five hundred, is there a second? There is a second, any questions or, or comments or thoughts?
I have a question, um, they also had another request along with that about the, coming up at Christmas, could that be included?
That, that is, if, if y'all so choose, um, they did request our assistance, um, in the Christmas parade, as well as the, um.
Okay, the Candyland, Christmas and Candyland, those two different things that they had requested, uh, participation in that. Christmas and Candyland.
Once, once we begin considering those, you know, then we need to consider what Ops pr- program is in Florale, so, uh, do you wanna try to look at all those as a single item? Or do we need to make a, give them an answer on that right now?
One of the items, they was gonna need an answer before December the first, correct?
Uh, actually, the, um, we were s- if we're going to participate in Ops Parade, I believe that we would need to let them know by the November the twenty-ninth, and.
Is that participation require payment?
Uh, yeah, let's see, sometimes they have a governmental laws in here, I'm not sure if that we have that.
Yeah.
It doesn't actually, it just says ten dollar parade fee per entry excluding emergency and law enforcement.
Okay.
On Ops. And, um, chamber members in Andalucia's ten dollars. And it does not state in this part of that.
So, so the thought might be, uh, Kyle, that we, that we, uh, do the Veterans Day, and go ahead and agree that we won't participate in the parades, Florale, Ops, and Andalucia, as part of that same motion, is that okay, Kyle?
Six make.
You okay with the second on that?
Fine.
And then, uh, the question about the participating in Candyland.
And it's a little bit more expensive than it's, or not.
I really would like to look at that, just along with the other communities, and see what we wanna do on the Candyland thing, so, is that okay?
Okay, alright.
So the, so the motion was changed, uh, by the mover and the second, to include the parades as part of that, so, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, that passed. And then we have a request for budget amendments, page thirty-eight through forty-four are those requests, and, uh, uh. I'll, I'll have to look to, to you guys and to, uh, Ms. Karen for direction on this, I talked to Karen about it, reviewed these, the specific request, uh, that we wanna consider came from, uh.
We had two departmental requests.
Alright, Judge Brooks, and where else was it?
Cats, Crystal Blunt of Cats.
Cats, that's right, Ms. Crystal. Uh. I tell you what, I, I mentioned Judge, that we just, let's see how this went, I think the Commissioners have a, a pretty good understanding, but maybe you wanna just share briefly what your thought is on, on these requests you've submitted, and let's see where we can go.
Yes, sir, um, the budget that was passed, I'm looking at you. Included money to purchase software, but it's not enough money to purchase the software. Um, the two thousand, the budget that was passed for two thousand seventeen, cut my office supplies by about, in the past, I'd had twenty-nine thousand for office supplies, this time I was giving fifteen. So I would like to take some of the software money and move it to cover the office supplies. I'm also asking for a thirty-five cent, I guess you would call it a step raise for four employees in my office, who have been there for a year and have never received a raise. Um, I'd also ask for part of that software money to be moved into overtime, uh, that was cut out of my two thousand seventeen budget, and the way my office works, you know, they're there eight to five, they leave at lunch. But if a customer comes in at five to five, we're gonna stay and make sure that customer's taken care of, and I believe last year, we spent about forty-one hundred dollars in overtime. So I've asked for five thousand to be moved back into the overtime, and then I had also requested money for a temporary salary. I think it was May of this past year, money was moved in my budget to allow me to hire temporary help. Um, I let, let, basically let her go when this new budget came in, because I didn't have money there to pay her, and I used my temporary help to cover lunches. You know, we have ladies in there, and two go at a time from eleven to one, and I need someone there to cover when those two ladies are going to lunch. You know, I don't, I, I know we have periods of time where we're not busy, but I, I can't tell you, okay, these hours are busy and these hours aren't busy, and there are certain days of the month that are busier than other days of the month. And it helps having this temporary help, her, basically, she works during the lunch hours, and she's there to cover the ladies going to lunch. I do my best to try not to have a line out the door, to the doors of the courthouse, and, um, the, the temporary help really helps with that.
Okay. Anyone have questions for, so you're looking at, uh, really, really you're asking that the funds already approved in your budget just be, be reallocated, and it's not all of them, it, it is, I didn't add those up, but it's, uh.
Yes. No. It is, I think it's about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars less, and don't hold me to those numbers, I've, I've done the numbers, but I don't have them in front of me.
So she's, so she's asking that we just reallocate those to areas that she thinks it will benefit her more, with the idea that we will come back at some future time to consider software upgrades? And we can, uh, certainly, uh, we'll work with her on using her funds, commission funds, uh, wh- however we need to, to get that done. Uh, the software is something you need pretty soon though, it's not something we can set aside for long, is it?
I would like to get more, I've checked with several companies, there's a new company that's just starting in a couple of county, they were going live in a couple of other counties. So it's going to be a little bit of time, but I want to do enough research to make sure that we get the best software and the most cost-effective software, sometimes the software can be kinda pricey. And I want to make sure that we're getting what's best for our county, but the requests that I've made right here, I feel like I need these to be able to effectively provide services to the residents of Covington County.
Well, I di- I discussed this with, uh, the administrator, and, uh, who has a lot of experience in that office, I think that between us, we felt like it was an appro- uh, an acceptable and appropriate way to shift this money to take care of her needs. We need her to do the best job she can with her staff and serve the public, and that's what she's suggesting this will allow her to do, and to the best, the best way possible, so, you know, I'm certainly okay with these, and, and would love to. Love to think that you guys will work with her on this, and then we'll, uh, we'll, moving forward, we'll consider the software and other needs. We can, why don't we take these on a, on a department by department basis, uh, your, your thoughts on this, any questions for the judge while she's here?
My only, and Stacy, I want you to know we talked about this, and I'm, I, I'm, um. My only concern, Greg, and, is, is, are we gonna be able to come back in a, with this, with this new software, with this money, in appropriate time for her to have the new software? Uh, uh, I certainly believe every one of these requests are understandable, I believe they need to be met. Uh, and I'm kinda gonna sit back, because y'all have been through this more than I have with this, and I'm gonna follow you on this one, uh, simply because I know that, that I've talked to Stacy about this before, and I know she's in this, in this, and it, it, you know. I'm wanting to go along with it, I just, I wanna know the feeling of, how soon can we come back and guarantee that we're gonna be able to do the same for the software?
What, what I would say to that is, if, if I can't keep my employees there.
I agree.
Then, there's no reason for me to have the software.
I agree.
And I'm hoping that, you know, these changes are made, I can get more information about the software, you know, I have some discretionary funds that I can use to also help with the purchase of the software. And that when we get more information ab- about the software, we can discuss that at that time, but I feel like I need this right now to make sure that my employees are taken care of, and that I can get the job done that I've been appointed to do.
Probably would need to cut here, and cut in some other areas, if, if we absolutely have to buy a hundred thousand, I don't know how much the software is, a hundred thousand dollar package. Uh, but there are also ways to just, uh, put that on a five, seven year lease, or whatever, and, cause you're gonna be using it for a long time. So I, I don't think this will hinder that, but, uh, and then talking to Karen, I'm comfortable that we're, we're okay with this, but to, to make this change, financially, we're good on the budget to do this, so.
Well, this would give her, I reckon, peace of mind, knowing that she is funded to carry her, to make her office work. And that's what I, I, I think, you know, at this time.
Okay. No other questions, we'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve this request as submitted.
I'll make a motion, we approve this.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Alright, any other questions before we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign, so we have, I'm ended that budget, yes ma'am, thank you. The, uh. The other item was with Cats, and I would, uh, ask Crystal to, to tell us, tell us what you want, please, and you can do it from there if you want to, now, we, we won't force you up here.
She is in the family way.
Is there a doctor in the house?
Okay, did y'all all get any of these pages?
Yes.
Okay, it's pretty much an overview of what I need, um, in our budget that we just, you know, did, I didn't get any overtime. Um, LBW actually pays for my burgers to work on Saturdays, so I'm getting the money in, I just need it in my, oh, it's mine, please.
Okay.
Um, the motor vehicles went from six thousand dollars last year to twenty-five hundred, I only got one new bus, so there's gonna be a lot of. And, and advertisement, um. I have to use MoneyDBE, which is Disabled Business Enterprises, this means. But I need to up that a hundred dollars, 'cause I have a one point eight percent quota. Um, and travel, completely burst from Aldott, but it went from mileage, two hundred fifty dollars to, for a thousand to two hundred fifty, and room and meals, a thousand to five hundred. I'm just asking for what I asked for. room and meals a thousand to five hundred. I'm just asking for what I asked for.
So is there a motion to uh approve the changes as to?
I make a motion we approve the exchanges.
Second.
Thank you.
Any questions? Uh, all in favor say aye. Thank you. Alright. Page forty seven of your, uh. We need to consider purchase uh vehicle, quick, quick conversation on that.
Don't mind her.
Well, we've got two different departments, I can break it down for y'all, the two different areas we're looking at and let y'all decide how you want to proceed from there. Uh, we have a request from the Engineers Department to surplus a John Deere motor grader.
Okay.
And that's uh one item that was up for surplus, and then for purchase, we have the Sheriff's Department that was allocated funding in his budget to purchase uh new law enforcement vehicles. Uh, we need to go through and do some approvals on that, so.
Okay.
And the comments.
Comments, Dennis?
Yeah, uh, four, six, okay, and well, patrol vehicle and one uh new jail van, which the girocky of that will be from the.
Okay. So you have a budgeted amount that will cover the cost of, of the four patrol vehicles and some, a part of the uh va- uh jail van and the rest of that cost you're gonna make up out of your budget, out of your funds? The jail?
The uh, those three quarters, so the right three quarters of jail vans kind of working base, uh, was.
General fund. So it's already in, okay, it's already in the budget.
It's already, yeah, we've done all this.
I got it. Okay. And the, and the budget's already been passed and approved, it's just a question of ordering them, is that right?
Right, and the four vehicles are gonna come from the general fund budget, and, and we were gonna do those on the, hopefully on a one year turnaround on those vehicles because we can buy them at uh, at the state bid price, and we should be able to use them, uh, the sheriff's office gonna use them for the investigators or whatever and do very little equipment on the vehicle as far as to keep them, to where we can resell them with a, that whole drill, all them and that kind of thing.
Okay.
The ones that you're speaking of are the investigators, is the ones he's supposed to be purchasing from law enforcement funds. We were supposed to purchase the Tahoe's, I mean the Explorers with the general fund.
Right. Okay. So it is already budgeted and uh I, I spoke with David earlier about the cost, and I don't remember the cost on them, but I did look at the cost and it was below the budgeted amount. So we're, it's seven, eight thousand or something below the budgeted amount. So the request is to, just to approve ordering them.
Correct.
With the understanding that order will not be ta- uh, delivery won't be taken until January thirty first, and I think it may be even longer. But that lets us get to a time that's easier for us to pay for it. Okay, but no earlier than January thirty one, I think it'd be appropriate. If y'all were inclined to do that, we'd entertain a motion to approve the order of these vehicles, and that, that can include the ones that he's gonna pay out of other funds as well if that's necessary.
I make a motion that we move forward with purchasing these vehicles.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion to uh approve the ordering of these for December, uh, January thirty one or later delivery. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, we got that approved. And then the other item was on the, what, Lynn, uh, s- uh, declaring one of your graders surplus?
Uh, that's correct. Um, and it would probably be sold in the uh March uh auction in Montgomery.
Alright.
That's the John Deere we've.
That's the John Deere, it's ten, right at ten years old.
Okay.
And the uh, the other item is the uh, basically the approval of the, the lease agreement for the new seven motor graders.
Okay, well, let's do the surplus item, then we'll come back to the lease item. Uh, so this is, the, the commission that previously approved uh or declared surplus, seven graders. This is the eighth grader, and then you're ordering seven, so you're reducing your fleet by one is the end result of that. So is there a motion to uh declare this John Deere grader surplus?
So moved.
Uh, and, and is okay for that, is, are y'all okay with the wood auction for that? Is that what you're proposing? Or gov deals take on?
Gov deals, I mean, either way, I mean, just whichever way.
We just use the surplus for he, did whatever he would, deems the best.
Yeah, okay, so y'all just leave that open too?
Right.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, we sell it. And then the second item was what?
It's just the uh, the, the approval of the uh, the lease agreement. There were several questions, uh, and Stephanie, and I think um Karen, everybody's looked at it. Um, and I, I gave, given you all each an attachment, uh, it's the addendum to actually to the lease agreement, and it's basically, it's signed by, by Flint Equipment stating and addresses all those questions that, that was brought up by the administrator and the, and attorney, so.
Comments on?
I've had an opportunity to look at the addendum and I'm okay with it.
Alright, so you guys have uh approved leasing graders, this is to give us the authority to sign the lease and get the things ordered, or delivery, how soon?
John?
Okay.
Should be, which that will be contingent on once the lease hold. But spent at, at the time when we started the process, the timeframe was forty five to six.
Okay.
And granted, we won't really be signing this lease until then, the lease is not starting until that's delivered, that's correct.
The lease is effective when the lease takes place. And, and part of the uh, part of the agreement was that we'd, there would be a couple of longer graders that are delivered, and that should happen first or next?
Next week, next week.
It was waiting for us to s- formalize the agreement, so.
Yeah, we had to get all the paperwork documented and uh.
So, so Stephanie's approved, uh, or given her blessing on the lease with the addendums that are part of it. Is there a motion to enter the lease with John Deere?
I make a motion we enter this at least on these seven graders, uh, with John Deere.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on it?
I'm well pleased.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, next item on the agenda is consider outstanding legal issues, that's what we're talking about. I don't think there's anything for discussion at this time unless you guys have something you're just burning to get, get on the floor. Alright, uh, Sarcoa fiscal year seventeen title three contract and local match requirements, uh, can you tell us a little about that Karen?
Uh, this is a program that the uh Sarcoa provides that assists the seniors in our area.
Sarcoa is South Alabama Regional Council on Aging.
The seniors that work in that area, um, home health type individuals, and this is the contract with Sarcoa to be approved for this eighteen year. We have a match of eleven thousand three hundred and eighty, uh, that will be due as well, and we do send reports for spending options and get a thirty thousand dollar reimbursement from there.
Okay. So was there a motion to enter this contract for twenty something year? Uh, yeah, for a second.
Okay.
Just, we've been doing it now. Good thing.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get away from that?
I didn't hear that.
Any other comments, questions?
Miss Stacy.
Who else? Okay.
Miss Harris? Anybody?
Putting everybody on the spot.
That's right.
If there's nothing else, uh, thank y'all so much for being here. Look forward to working together.
Our next meeting, they had on.
Next meeting will be December, what day?
Fourteenth.
December the fourteenth.
Oh, uh, no, that's gonna be, I'm sorry, that's gonna be the thirteenth, cause we changed that after we had done the other.
Okay, December the thirteenth on Tuesday at nine o'clock?
Nine AM.
Nine AM in this building. Encourage all of you to join us. If there's nothing else.
Mister Ron.
Whatever.
You got anything you wanna add?
Done.
You did a good job.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
You and Ron and your partner.
They're buddies.
We appreciate it.
Thank y'all. We stand to German. Thank you.